...singing over a national anthem.
7.8. And I would take a motion to add that item to the agenda. I get a motion to add that. Counselor Wheeler? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. I believe everyone has received copies of the amendments now. And so I would take a motion to adopt the agenda with these amendments. Counselor Long? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Excellent. Reading of council minutes. May I get a motion to adopt that? Counselor Bossert? All in favor? That's carried. Yes, please. For the timing at the last council meeting. Again, welcome. You're here to talk about the Primary Care Network, I gather.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate this opportunity. I feel a little bit uneasy because a lot of you have already heard my spiel before and can probably interject a lot of what I have to say anyways. But what I wanted to do was, first off, give a little history as far as the Primary Care Network goes and where we come from. About a decade ago, the federal government gave some grant money to the provincial government and a lot of the provinces said, "Well, we're going to put this towards our -- just put it into our healthcare system." So into things like Alberta Health Services or their provincial program. The Alberta governments did something a little bit different. They said, "We're going to create what's called the Primary Care Initiative for the primary care networks." And this was really in response to physicians' need for them to have a little bit more control of some of the money that was coming in, some of the programs that were available, and really to direct them to their patient populations. So physicians wanted to have a little bit more control rather than this money just going into Alberta Health Services and getting lost in the array of whatever Alberta Health Services puts their money towards. Physicians kind of took this money on and developed the Primary Care Initiative. So this is a -- it's an agreement between Alberta Health Services, Alberta Health, which is the actual funder for this, and the AMA, which is the Alberta Medical Association. So the three groups kind of come together and they've developed what's called the Primary Care Initiative. This is really looking at grassroots programs based on the needs of the community. So as we started our Primary Care Network, this is probably three, two, three years ago that they started this and really looking into this.
That would help, wouldn't it? About two or three years ago when they started looking at this, they brought a group in, mostly from our physician group here in town, some consultants from outside from AMA, and they all came together and said, "What does this community need as far as primary healthcare services?" So they developed what's called a business plan. This business plan really looks at in-depth needs of the community. So where are we falling short in Alberta Health Services in primary care? Now, for those of you that don't know what primary care is, primary care is really the first point of contact for patients into the system. So that could be the doctor's office, that could be a mental health program, that could be even the emergency department. These are all primary care initiatives of Alberta Health Services. Now, Alberta Health Services has their own primary care and those are the programs that they had available to us. The Primary Care Network is looking at adding those resources to the community of Drayton Valley. And then what they've come up with looks at mental health, chronic disease management, which is focused mostly on diabetes for the beginning, and family planning and obstetrics, which doesn't come into effect until about the third year of operations. Now, we're only into about six months into our operations, so we've got some time before we're going to start looking at family planning and obstetrics. That will be highly determined on AHS and what they decide to do with the hospital here and how they look to develop their program because we will really just be supporting them. We can't bring in obstetricians, we can't bring in potentially midwife, but that would be the max that we could really bring in ourselves. So it's highly dependent on AHS. A few years ago, they threw a race and Alberta Health Services said, "We want to implement what's called PCN evolution." So not only do we want you to do these clinical programs for primary care, but we also want you to do these other things on top of that, which are really things looking at what's called panel management. So the basis of what's called a medical home, really looking at the physician-patient relationship. I know that my physician is so-and-so and so-and-so knows that I am their patient. And so it takes the viewpoint of, "These are my patients that I'm looking after. It's not just you sitting in front of me at the moment at the time that I'm worried about. I'm worried about all my patient," which is what we call the panel. So it's really managing that patient panel so that we can follow up effectively, so patients aren't falling through the cracks, so that we're better able to take care of things like diabetes or pre-diabetes that we can control more effectively before it becomes a real issue for the patient. There's also an initiative to get more community involvement in governance. So we'll be looking at potentially adding a community member to our board of directors and also continual evaluation. Now, unfortunately, the government has said, "We need to implement all these things, but we're not going to give you any more money," which is very common, I think, in healthcare. But we are stepping off on the right foot. With our programs, we've actually started with the panel management. Within the family or the home model, this panel management is very effective and very efficient. And so with our model here in Drayton Valley, we've decided to really start with the evolution and start with the panel management, which is the work that we're continuing to do right now. We have met a panel manager that looks after to identify that patient-physician relationship and starting to build those panels for each of the physicians so they know who their patients are, they can bring up lists of all their diabetic panels, or who are their patients that are seen in the emergency department on a regular basis. So this is the type of management that we're looking at being more effective and almost proactive with our patient care rather than, again, "Who's sitting in front of me and what's our problem?" That's what we want to get away from. We want to get more proactive in our patient management. Our funding comes from, again, Alberta Health. We're funded basically per capita, which means those panels that are identified by the physicians, we get $22 per patient for that with the physician. So that's why it comes from so more patients, the physicians see that the better outcomes we have financially. That doesn't mean that we want to overload the physicians. In fact, that's the exact opposite. We just want them to be associated with that physician, have that physician aware of them. Doesn't mean that they have to go in and see them every two weeks or even on a regular basis. It just means that they're on their panel. And we develop our own panels. The government of Alberta does that for us. And so it's kind of a crude-cut method that they develop based on billing so that they can identify who would potentially be on that panel. It's really up to us to develop true one-to-one relationship panels that the physicians accept and the patients accept. So that's where we are now. Currently, we're looking -- traditional PCNs are run in physician clinics, so they'll put in a panel manager right in the clinics. Unfortunately, as we most -- as most of us know, the physician clinics are awfully tight here. They don't have a lot of room to take on new employees into their sites. So we're developing our own site and we'll house clinical people there, our panel managers there, and our administration there as well.
Are you in your new home yet?
We're looking at a couple months. We do have a site, but we are -- we need to do some renovations to make it clinic-worthy. So things like water into the rooms.
Right, good.
Yeah, but we do have a site and I'm really pushing for two months for them to get all their leasehold improvements done. So that's basically my spiel. Are there any questions?
Marty, thank you for your presentation to council. I think it's helpful, just in assisting get the word out as to the rationale for the Primary Care Network. And it's been a long time coming to Drayton Valley. Very happy that it's arrived. My specific question is, are there any plans for expansion, just looking ahead beyond the three areas that you've identified just now? So you've got mental health, chronic care, particularly diabetes, and family planning and obstetrics. So beyond that, is there any of the other healthcare-related professions going to be brought in?
Now, our business plan is allocated on a three-year basis, so right now we don't have any definitive plans to do that. However, because we have figured out fairly aggressively in our panel management, we've already adapted that into our budget. So if the government comes back and says, "We recognize that some PCNs are having trouble getting their panel management program up and going, we'll pay you for that program," which is kind of what a lot of PCNs are hoping for, we can then direct that into other clinical programs. So being aggressive in that way, we can allocate different resources. The other thing, too, is we do have some physicians that have not signed up with the PCN yet, which would mean additional funding for the PCN. Again, once we get that additional funding, we can allocate that to different programs. Something like sexual health would be something that would be interesting for this community. And I've heard numerous times that that would be beneficial.
Is there any particular reason why a physician wouldn't? Trying to -- you don't need to --
Yeah.
-- politics, but...
Really, there's no reason why they wouldn't. It's just free money from the government coming into the community for them to sign up. I think there's a little bit of hesitancy because of the area that this -- these physicians cover that may be perceived as outside of the Primary Care Network area or reach of control.
And is it?
No. I mean, we can offer services there as well. It's really -- I kind of understand this physician's point of view, that they're looking at what's going to happen after they're gone. And if they sign up with the PCN, then the government might just say, "Well, you're in a PCN, let them control it," which really isn't the role of the PCN. So I see their hesitancy in signing up right now until they get kind of a plan in order and get AHS on board with everything.
Right, good. Counselor Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Marty. Good to see you here this morning finally. I've been working a little bit with you through the physician recruitment team, but I still have unclarity about how a patient is networked with a physician if that patient doesn't have a regular family doctor. How does that panel get put together when a person in the community is only accessing health services through eMERGE because they can't get into a clinic? So how does that pairing work when a patient really doesn't have a family doctor?
And that's one of our challenges that we've been given is to -- and that's part of evolution, is to attach every person within your PCN area to a physician. So that's one of our initiatives and we have to work on that and we'll develop programs to do that. As far as funding, it automatically happens. So if they see a physician in the eMERGE, they're automatically attached to that physician because of billing purposes. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be aware of them in our panel management. That's really up to us to develop a program to get those people into physicians. And a lot of that's going to be physician recruitment and getting enough physicians that they can have a manageable panel, because we don't want to give them 3,000 or 4,000 patients, right? We want them to have a manageable panel, but we want everyone to be a part of that, be part of a panel. So that's a challenge that we're facing right now.
You also mentioned community involvement and that you're looking for or will be looking for board members. Do you know when that call might go out to the community for board members?
Really, right now, I think a lot of PCNs are sitting back and seeing how it's working with other PCNs that have adopted that. And that'll also be up to our board of directors, which is physician-based, and they'll determine, "Yeah, we're ready now to do it," or "We should probably wait a little bit longer."
So you're just not sure.
We don't have a real date. We're going to talk about that next week at our board meeting.
Thank you.
Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. I know you just said, getting started with the panel management. Really, with how many physicians you have, how many physicians do you think we are short in the community to have a ideal number?
Well, we don't look at who's not panel managed. We don't look at who's not on a panel. So that's difficult to say. Looking at what's -- what might be the population of Drayton Valley?
7,000.
7,000. So if you look at -- well, we have part-time physicians, but each physician could really look at about 14,000 to 2,000 max per physician. For a full-time physician that would take on patients on a regular basis, so...
All right, Counselor Miller?
Just wondering, just going back to your previous point about the physicians, what's the percentage of physicians that are signed up now?
There's only -- that aren't. That aren't. Yes, we do have the majority. Now, they're individual involved with the PCN, and their acceptance of the programming, especially panel management, varies between physicians, which we're not going to go in and tell them how to run their business or that they should adopt this. We're just a service that we can provide for them.
Marty Ross?
I did want to touch base a little bit more on your question, Mayor, of different programs. In different PCNs, they're looking at -- now, this has never been done before, but they're starting to look at outside funding outside of Alberta Health. There have been companies that have donated to the PCN so they can house programs like sexual health and so donation-based programs, which is a thing that I think is catching on in a lot of different PCNs, just that idea. So I'll throw that out as well. If we're looking for different programs, we could possibly look at outside sources of funding. Corporate sponsorship, yep. So and that's, I think Grand Prairie has just taken that on, that they're -- they house a whole sexual health program with nurses and LPNs that are based fully off of funding from outside resources.
And is that vetting the board?
The board would have to look at that and say, "Do we agree with, you know, accepting this money?" Because there can't be any...
Agendas are concerned...
We can't be looked at as funds for to their employees or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Very good. Interesting. Counselor Bossert?
Sorry, one more question. Marty, you did say that you have a new site that you're working on. Can you share with us where that is? I'm occasionally asked how the PCN is doing, and alls I say right now is that you're housed at Rotary House.
Yep.
So can you fill us in on that a little bit?
We've leased it on 50th Street. It's the Sturdy Stone Plaza. Currently, we have plans all drawn up and they're all ready to go. There's quite a bit of work that needs to be done just to make it site-ready so we can house a medical home there. But like I say, I'm optimistic. Yeah.
Well, it's a good high-traffic location and high-visibility for the PCN.
We want it to be -- we didn't want to give preference to one clinic or the other and be too close to one and not to the other, so we wanted to service both clinics. And I think that's a good, reasonable area to do that.
Right, right. Ms. Jason will make the presentation on behalf of Rotary Club.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'd like to exchange my cap for a different purpose this morning. I just want to talk a bit about the Rotary House project and what has happened since the time that we had tenants move in last year. And of course, PCN being one of those current tenants in Rotary -- in Rotary House. But as the committee member and chair of the Rotary House Committee, it has been an extreme pleasure to have seen the success that has happened within Rotary House. We've had presentations by some of the tenants within Rotary House to our Rotary Club meeting. And significance was a discussion and presentation by the Boys and Girls Club. Sandy Labrie came in and talked to the Rotary Club about what's happening with the Boys and Girls Club. Commented about the fact that parents were coming in and recognizing that the children that they had in the Boys and Girls Club in the after-school program were also in a position to be helped by two to three of the other agencies located within Rotary House. And that is exactly the purpose of why Rotary House was created, so that we could ensure that there was better service provided to the children and to the families within the community. Already commented about the fact that they're going into the Rotary House and accessing services that they would not normally have been able to access just simply because of a lack of knowledge of knowing that. Additionally, the service providers from those organizations within Rotary House are working together to make sure that, in the same concept, the Primary Care Network wants to do a wraparound service. That's what these agencies are doing within Rotary House, is providing those wraparound services so that they are meeting on a regular basis to talk about what type of service needs to be provided to those particular children or those particular families. And they're doing that together rather than in an isolated spectrum. That really -- it really does make eye contact of the fact that the concept of what Rotary House is set out to do is definitely there. Part of what we need to do is to make sure that we recognize everybody that has had a part to play in the development of Rotary House. While that namesake is there, we recognize it's a community building, it's a community service. And the number of organizations, the number of municipalities, the number of sponsors, the number of businesses, the number of volunteers that have put in time, effort, in-kind contribution resources, we want to make sure we recognize those individuals and organizations. So that is why I'm here today, is to thank the town of Drayton Valley for its part in making Rotary House happen. So I have a plaque. Our committee has ensured that we want to make sure that we present this. And so, Mr. Mayor, if I can, present to you a plaque recognizing the Rotary Club's "Thank You" to the town of Drayton Valley.
And thank you very much to Rotary House. I'm sure you'll convey that to the mayor. Town has always been supportive of the concept and it appears the concept is being borne out in its resource. Well, I'd very much like to have been able to attend the event. I think there was a communication problem and so we didn't become aware of it at the time, but thank you nonetheless and that's great. It's good to see a success story. Something that they want to bring to council to do so? I see the audience, we have our two -- I think I was wrong. We have the candidate list. We have the two candidates for February 3rd and Randy Riley. And was there anyone that wanted to say anything at this time? Very good. 2014-19-F. Counselor Miller?
Following the passing of 2013-15-F, at the June 4 council meeting, it was noted that the body of the bylaw contained a clerical error. Accordingly, in order to have a local improvement bylaw approved, we will require the passing of a new bylaw to amend the contents of the original bylaw. Therefore, I move that council give second reading to bylaw 2014-19-F. of the original bylaw. Therefore, I move that council give second reading to bylaw 2014-19F.
Okay, we have a motion, any discussion? All who's in favor? That's carried.
Thank you. I move that council give third and final reading to bylaw 2014-19F.
I want to see, any discussion on that motion? All who's in favor? And that is carried. I will go find the mayor.
All right, I got 7.2 as amended, request for incapacitated elector at home voting resolution, Counselor Wheeler.
I only have the original that was included in the package. Do you have it amended on a different sheet of paper?
I think it's coming to you.
Okay. Thanks. The process of passing the incapacitated elector at home voting resolution will enable an elector who is unable to vote at advanced vote or voting station on election day because of physical incapacity to vote in the 2015 by-election. Upon request, arrangements can be made for the elector to have the deputy return of the elected to take the elector's vote during the hours that the voting station is open. The process may take place by having town council pass a resolution to have incapacitated elector at home voting in the town of Drayton Valley. Therefore, I move that council approve the incapacated home elector voting, sorry, elector. Which will enable a physically incapacitated elector who is unable to vote at any advanced vote or voting stations on election day for the upcoming February 3, 2015 by-election.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. I just know what the, is a typo. And so it was corrected in the amended motion. So I'll call further discussion on that motion. Counselor Long?
Does it include sleepy?
If they felt that. Yes, Shandra.
The Local Authorities' Elections Act would include a definition of what incapacitated would mean, but if it's someone who's physically unable to leave their home, probably sleepiness wouldn't apply. But a physical disability that would prevent them from easily leaving their home, they just need to contact me, or they could even contact Jill, or one of the administration here in the office, and we can make the arrangements. The group that will be going out to do the polling stations at the seniors' facilities will be the group that would come around, if there are those arrangements made.
Thank you. And Shandra, just a further question to this. This is something that was done or provided for at the time of the general election, correct? And was it you that? But it's there nonetheless. And our job is to, in the greatest extent possible, or reasonably possible, that we make provision for everybody to exercise their franchise. So without any further question or discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the December 10, 2014 Governance and Priorities Meeting, the annual cost-of-living increase or adjustment to council's remuneration as per policy C-0100 was discussed. It was determined that, given the, given that the amended policy had only been in effect for six months, that council would be foregoing the increase for the upcoming year 2015. Therefore, I move that council approve the waiver of the 2015 council cost-of-living increase or adjustment.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bossert. Any discussion on this motion? No? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you. On December 10, 2014, a memorandum of agreement was reached between the QP bargaining unit and the Town of Drayton Valley Bargaining Representatives. Attached to you will find the memorandum of agreement for your review. The negotiated wage increase over a three-year contract will be 3% in 2015, 3% in 2016, and 3.5% in 2017. The QP members under the town's employment have agreed to enratify the terms of the new agreement. We are now requesting that the agreement be ratified for a mayor and council, so that it may be, may come into effect. In conjunction with the ratification of the 2015-2017 collective agreement, it is also requested that the mayor and council consider granting the equivalent wage increase for all salaried non-union staff and management, including volunteer firefighters. It has been a standard practice of the town to match the negotiated wage increase of non-union staff to that of union staff. Therefore, I move that council ratify the 20, the new 2015-2017 collective agreement between QP Local 2015, 2515, sorry, and the Town of Drayton Valley, as well as the negotiated wage increase for the union and non-union staff, volunteer firefighters, and management of the Town of Drayton Valley.
Thank you, Counselor Nato. Any discussion on this, on this motion? Mr. Rander, did you have anything I wish to add?
No.
It was, oh, okay. Any other discussion?
No.
Very good. I'll call the question. All in favor? That's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Counselor, standing to Energy Academy, the Town of Drayton Valley for the Clean Energy Technology Center.
The town of Drayton Valley has been working with the Northern Province Trade Commission and Council to explore opportunities between all the clean energy and clean energy and technologies in the Netherlands. It was introduced to the Energy Academy Europe, it's EAE, located in the northern Netherlands. Energy Academy Europe has a very similar business plan to the CETC. For the past seven years, the town administration has made a web conference with the EAE to learn more about the realization and potential for partnerships and possibly project development. The town of Drayton Valley CEO has agreed to the annual energy conference hosted by EAE in the Netherlands. And joining us on EAE, certainly of understanding with the town, to set the focus between both parties to engage in cooperative activities in the areas of education, applied research, development, and areas which may be of mutual interest or benefit to both parties, including CETC and EAE, to support the transition to reliable, sustainable, and affordable energy. Today, the town memorandum of understanding has been presented to council for adoption. So I move that council approve the memorandum of understanding between Energy Academy Europe and the Town of Drayton Valley.
Thank you, Counselor. And as a participant in that conference, I want to say how thoroughly impressed, typically easily impressed with the level of discussion and organization of the Energy Academy officials and participants in that conference, and indeed in the Energy Academy infrastructure. This is an initiative that, in broad strokes, essentially is already doing what we would like to one day achieve with our Clean Energy Center and Biomile Initiative. Their focus is perhaps narrower than what ours might be, in that their focus is ultimately on renewable fuel solutions. But, and ours may be broader than that, or have broader application. But notwithstanding that, the complete research, applied and pure research, the, the education and training, both vocational skills as well as academic training, in, in, under the Energy Academy umbrella, is, it has all been achieved within a period of two years. And what that says is that there is very significant acceptance, understanding, and appreciation for the need to look at other options. The Netherlands, I've learned, is a country with very large natural gas reserves. And so, the natural question, when you have a very large supply of natural gas, relatively clean burning fuel, why do you spend so much time and effort attempting to, to discover other renewable fuel solutions? Well, the answer is simple. They know that the gas is going to run out one day. It's a lesson that we in North America could probably take to heart a little bit more. I'm not saying that we need to adopt things in lockstep with our friends in Europe, but it is something that we could pay some attention to and, and learn from. So, having said that, I'll, I'll open it up to questions. This memorandum, of course, is the background that Counselor Long read, just to blind our community to anything. What it is, is a sincere expression on the part of both parties to pursue opportunities, mutually beneficial opportunities for research initiatives through our Clean Energy Center. So, any more discussion? Questions? No? Very well, I'll call the question. All in favor? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. 7.6, this is Counselor Nato. Development Permit DV 14-188.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Town of Drayton Valley, along with the Wildrose School Division, are proposing to create a school bus hub within the lands legally described as Northwest 949, 7th West of the Fifth, ready, and municipally described as 4725, 46th Street. The purpose of the school bus hub is to relocate the existing transfer site from Eldorado Elementary School to the old HW pickup junior high school grounds. The site is to accommodate approximately 28 school buses, which will run from 8:00 AM to 9, or 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and then again from 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. The proposed bus hub is to be located along the west side of the property with the access off of 44th Street, as well as off of 46th Avenue. The existing parking lot is also to be utilized by connecting access to the 46th Avenue. The development of a school bus hub is neither permitted or discretionary use within the zoning district. Therefore, council approval is required. Advertising of the proposed bus hub was placed in the local paper, as well as being circulated to adjacent landowners within 500-meter radius of the proposed location. Three letters were received and are attached for council's review. So there are several options on the table. Option A being, I move that council table development permit DV 14-188 to allow the Town and Wildrose School Division to revisit the plans to development and work with adjacent landowners. Option B, move that council approve development permit DV 14-188 for the development of the proposed bus hub. And option C, moving that council refuse the development permit DV 14-188 for the development of the proposed bus hub on grounds that it is neither permitted nor discretionary use on their district. Therefore, with those three options being presented, I move for option B, I move that council approve development permit DV 14-188 for the development of the proposed bus hub.
Just so we're clear, Counselor Nato, the option B and the amendment to the agenda does not read the same. You read the option B from the original agenda package?
That's the one I was just handling.
Okay.
That should have been the amended one.
In, in the amended, just a second. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong one. I apologize. There we are.
You can amend it. It only says you table or you refuse it.
No, what we have, what we've been handed very recently. Has everyone got it, Rita?
I did have that.
So everyone got, there's only one sheet that actually indicates options A, B, and C. So I just want to be clear which one. So on the, in the amendment to the agenda, it clearly identifies options A, B, and C. Option B being, moving that council approve development permit 14-188 for the development of the proposed bus hub. Is that correct, Counselor Nato? All right, thank you. Right, thank you. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah, I just have some questions about if all the questions from the association were answered. I'm not, I don't drive a bus, so I don't necessarily understand, but they wanted entrances and exits at both the east and the west. And on this diagram, I, I don't see that. I'm not sure. I'm probably reading it wrong. I just want to make sure that the people who are using it, who are building it for, their questions have been answered, or they're not being answered, that's all.
Great. And I'll refer that to Mr. Deel.
Yes, the design was done with the help of the bus drivers. So it is basically their design.
Anything further? Counselor Nato?
Well, originally, I wasn't in favor of it being at this location. I, I think there are better locations, but I know we're limited as to what's available to us and to Wildrose School Division. So it's kind of a, it's a compromise of sorts, really. So, given that we wanted to see that 500-meter radius be that, that because in that area, generally would typically only have gone to a handful of people, and we want, and we expanded that so the entire neighborhood would be consulted, I feel better about that. And given that we've only really had one letter of discontent, and the rest have been either in support or from, from the bus association, I feel better about moving forward with it, now that the entire neighborhood has been consulted, rather than just a handful that would have been given the location of the bus hub. So, as I said, I think it's a compromise that I'm, I neither, I guess I'm cost-neutral on it at this point, but I'm happy that we have at least extended it, so more people can have the discussions about it.
Thank you, Counselor Nato. Anything further? I too have had discussions with, with a representative of a group within the immediate neighborhood of the bus hub. And it appears I was able to answer the bulk of their questions satisfactorily, based on the history of this arrangement. So I'm, I'm heartened to see that it, that the, the feedback based on that experience, as well as the letters we've received, are by and large positive. And I think it's important for people, and I've mentioned this to others in the past, and I'll reiterate it, it's important to note that this is an important step in attempting to develop the remainder of the land on the old HW site into a meaningful, valuable public space. And I see Mr. Scott from Wildrose School Division Board is, is present, and I'll invite you to speak to the item, if you wish. No? You're merely here to text my information home. Okay, right. So with that, any further discussion? No? I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, I got 7.7, Counselor Wheeler, the motion to going camera.
Yes, I move that council go into camera at 10:00.
Thank you. All in favor of that motion?
Yes.
Carried. Thank you. We're going into camera at 10:00 AM. So what that means is that council will deliberate on the item 7.7 without, in the absence of the public or media or any of that sort of thing. We'll call you back in as soon as the item is addressed.
Move out of in-camera at 10:21.
Thank you very much. All in favor? That's carried.
I move to take from the table the order to purchase for the lands legally described as Lot 1, Plan 7622449.
Thank you. Any discussion on, actually, there's no discussion on that. So I'll call the question. All in favor? That's carried. That's carried. Councilor Wheeler?
I move that council amend the motion as taken from the table to read. I move that council authorize the mayor and town manager to execute the order to purchase a portion of the lands legally described as lot two, plan seven six two two four four nine.
Thank you, Councilor Wheeler. Any discussion on that motion? No?
Not on this one, but I think the first one should say lot two. The first motion would be.
Oh. You know what? You're absolutely correct. All right. No. No. Oh, okay. That's right, and that's why, so this, that's why the amending motion. Right? So we're good. So we have the motion to, for council to amend the motion as taken from the table, as Councilor Wheeler read, for lands legally described as lot two, plan seven six two two four four nine. Okay. All in favor of that motion? Okay, that's carried. Thank you, Councilor Wheeler.
I move that council authorize the mayor and town manager to execute the order to purchase a portion of the lands legally described as lot two, plan seven six two two four four nine.
Thank you, Councilor Wheeler. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? That's carried.
I move that the subdivision application DV fourteen twelve for the subdivision of lands within southwest four forty-nine seven west of the fifth. For option A, I move the council approve the subdivision DV fourteen twelve fourteen for the subdivision of lands within southwest four forty-nine seven west of the fifth, with the conditions as noted below.
Conditions one through eight under option A. For the record, any discussion on that motion? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. So that concludes item seven point seven, and we're going to call a short break at this time. Thank you very much. So we have, huh? Oh, I'm sorry, seven point eight. My mistake. Where's seven? Yeah, sorry about that. Eight, Department of Labor Service in Alberta, Councilor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In meetings with council during the level of service review for the fire service, the department expressed concerns regarding the EMS response in our community. This specific concern is in regards to our level, our local EMS service, which is controlled by the Alberta Health Services, leaving our community on transfer calls, which results in a shortage of EMS personnel in our local community. As a result, the fire services is being called more frequently to attend medical emergencies in which the fire services is assisting EMS staff with patient care or are first on scene and performing medical assistance until EMS units arrive on the scene. A letter was recently sent to Alberta Health Services, Mr. Lael McCowherd, who is the Executive Director of Operations for the Central Zone Region, and the letter addressed these concerns. Mr. K, Mr. Kinneller Keller, McKeller, and his associates, Mr. Scott Halsworth, met with the fire services and Mr. Mark Shagnow, the CAO for Brazu County, to discuss this issue. During the meeting, a proposal was presented to Alberta Health Services to prepare, to perhaps relieve some of the strain on our local EMS by providing a type of EMS quick-response unit that could respond to medical emergencies but would not transport individuals to the hospital. During times in which this unit is not responding to an emergency, it could be used to provide assistance to individuals in our community who may require medical, who may require medical assistance, but who do not require a trip to the hospital, a clinic, or an emergency room. This unit could be used to provide assistance to seniors who have health issues, patients who have just left the hospital, individuals who may require assistance with medications, or who are suffering from chronic illnesses, diseases, or are recovering addicts. Following the initial meeting with Alberta Health Services, it was agreed that this idea may have some merit and could possibly qualify for a project, pilot project. Unfortunately, shortly after this meeting, the fire services was informed that a service delivery review was being undertaken by Alberta Health Services, and any further discussions regarding this project shall be discontinued indefinitely. As a response to this, from Alberta Health Services, Brazu County Council has drafted a letter addressed to Minister Stephen Mendel, Minister of Health, strongly urging him to allow talks to continue regarding this situation and the possibility of a pilot project in this area. Brazu County Council is asking the Towne and Drayton Valley to support this initiative by signing this letter as a show of support. Therefore, I move that councils approve submitting a joint letter of support with the Brazu County and the Village of Breton to the Minister of Health regarding the EMS response in our community and the possibility of a project, pilot project.
Thank you, Councilor Bossert. I think it's important to note that this letter was slightly amended from the original to delete any suggestion or obligation for payment of any kind. This is a service which is operated by the province. That might probably be the jurisdiction that covers the cost of this sort of thing. Nonetheless, we are pleased to entertain the request from Brazu County. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been following this issue for some time. The fact that many of our ambulances are pulled over our area for transfers to the city hospitals has caused a shortage of EMS services in our community, and often our fire services are put on call for services that they are actually not trained or supervised to cover. And in reading the paper this week, I saw that not less than four times in the past two weeks, this has actually been the case where fire services has been called or has been first on scene to what should have been an EMS call. So I highly support the idea of having another emergency vehicle in our community that stays within the community, that could be a supplement to the services, to the wonderful services that we already have. And I really hope that the minister evaluates our situation. I'm sure it's not the only, we're not the only community in the province that has a situation such as this, but it really does need to be addressed, so I am highly in favor of sending this letter into the minister and hope that he takes it under serious consideration.
Thank you. Anything further? I'll call the question. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. Items, now we're done. Okay. Eight point one, information items. Eight point one, Petroleum and Technology Alliance of Canada, what is the report from Councilor Wheeler? Eight point two, the equality facility fund development strategy, community September and October minutes. Can I get a motion to accept those items for information? Councilor Bossert? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Department reports, planning development. Jen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's nothing really new to report for the month of December. It was pretty slow, but, and there were some holidays in there, but at the January 20th meeting, I'll be bringing my year-end report for 2014.
That was the only question I had. So you already answered it. Thank you. Eight point two, transportation. Sonia?
Good morning. Priority streets have been cleared as per the snow removal agreement, or the policy, and residential clearing is half over. I encourage the residents to access our website and Facebook page so that they can check out our activities and see how far along we are, as we constantly update when we're completing. And they should also look for any of the street clearing signs as well. The TDG route is currently being enforced, and there's been some issues with the traffic lights at Fifty Street South and Highway 22. So Alberta Transportation did look at them yesterday, and they have put them into a flashing mode at the moment while they try and figure out what's wrong and how to set the timer correctly. And that's about it.
All right. Any questions, Councilor Nato?
It's, I guess, not really a question. I'm just wondering, maybe between you and Jill, I noticed that the city of, I don't know if they're a city or a town, Towne of Sylvan Lake. When they do their snow removal, they do it in phases on their website, so they show this is the phase in a map, and it's very, just, it's a little better way to communicate rather than the really wordy one that we're posting right now. And if you could do, say, a phase one, this is where we're doing today, next time you're doing, you can, it kind of extends out, so maybe it's just a little bit more clear. Visually, I find people are, if they can look at it really quickly, know where they are, and they're good, but to sit there and read a full-page document, maybe they won't, wouldn't be, so if we could just maybe.
Absolutely.
Looking at the Towne of Sylvan Lake to see how they do it, and maybe something that we can adopt that might work for us a little bit better.
It should be fairly easy to do, just because we clean by the quadrants, so it should be very easy to do.
Anything further? Thank you very much. Nine point three, community services, accessibility, and sustainability.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things to report on. January fourteenth, there's a community map program volunteer information meeting. It's also for recruitment of volunteers necessary to help out with the community map program. The community map program, of course, is that program that provides temporary shelter to those with nowhere else to go, and volunteers are needed to help out with the program, help them direct these individuals to proper resources, but then also to provide supervision. So that's happening January fourteenth at seven o'clock at the Rotary House. January twenty-fourth is the board development workshop. I know we currently have over twenty individuals registered for the board development workshop, so spaces are definitely limited, so we want to make sure that people know that the board development workshop, which helps out to those organizations and individuals who have either executive or some responsibility with an organization, nonprofit organization, excellent workshop to go to. And the deadline for registering is coming up Monday, so we are asking people to make sure that they are registering a maximum of three individuals per organization to that board development workshop. So January twenty-fourth, full day, eight thirty to four thirty at the Rotary House. One, that's a little bit further down the road, but certainly very important, March tenth, hosting fundraising and grant writing workshop. Of course, always critical to all organizations in order for their sustainability. That's happening March tenth, five PM, at the Rotary House, and that's a part between the Towne, Brazu County, and the Community Foundation. Additionally, again, we're coming close to a conclusion of the reviews of the community sustainability plan and the social development plan. The community sustainability plan will be, we just received it on Monday, the newest version, so I'll be sitting with our town committee, taking a look at it, and the intention is to bring it to the next council meeting for presentation, not for adoption, because we want to ensure that the public still has an opportunity to look at the plan before council adopts it. And the same with the social development plan. Actually, this week, we're meeting with the Healthy Communities Coalition to review the social development plan draft, and again, same thing, bring it to the next council meeting so it can at least be presented to the community and reviewed, and then again for adoption at a succeeding council meeting. That's my report.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So another very good workshops, and another community-based initiatives coming up. Any questions, Councilor Nato?
Not to the one specifically, but I know the park redesign, are the, is that coming to us in February?
We're hoping that we can bring that to a governance and priorities meeting, and I believe that one is scheduled for the seventeenth. I don't have my calendar in front of me, but that's the one that we're planning to bring it to, and then after that, again, the same thing too, it'd be presented to council, but first opportunity at the governance and priorities meeting.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much. Information, Protective Services, Mr. Nato?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the most significant development information service was descended on the app and the newer page, and that's on its way now, and we certainly welcome input from council as to improvements, because the app is first appearance, and we constantly want to improve it. We've had one suggestion about the maps in terms of the Facebook page. We're certainly looking at how we can promote it. We want to push attention to the app and get people to download it and make it more useful to people. So generally, talking to council, we have had some discussions about how we can promote the app and what we can do to make people aware of it and download it as a useful tool, not just another app that they could have on their phone, but as a useful tool to put information out to the public.
Great. Thank you. Anything, any questions, Councilor Nato?
Sorry. Is there a way to find out how many people have downloaded the app so far?
I presume we can through the app on the Android, but I would like to check on that through, they're tracking it, because they have the ability to go in and see how many downloads we've had. And the idea through the, to drive people to the, to the app so that they download that and it becomes passe in terms of the community having access to it.
Thank you. Councilor Wheeler?
How's the crane rink?
The crane is complete. The occupation permit has been signed off, so the culling club is in there. The culling club has had, I think, one issue, which they've communicated to the insurance company through Michelle, and that's being attended to. Otherwise, everything is done that needs to make it safe to occupy again, and there are a few structural things that are not detrimental to occupation of building, which will be completed in the summer, or the spring, I should say.
Good. Thank you very much. Eight point five, administration, Mr. Deal?
Yeah, we should, I've been working on the Building Canada Fund with Sonia and ISL over the holiday season, and I think I'll bring some information to you fairly soon at the GNP meeting, once we have the final information. We're working with a company from Calgary to set up this water recycling. As Per Farrell's report, you know, there's chemicals going in there, so they want to set up a lab with us here in the CEDC. We have a meeting with them tomorrow. And as council, I wanted to explore the airport situation there. We have the same consultants who Panoka has, and they were here, and they looked at our airport, and they're going to bring a proposal, which we'll bring to council to see if, what, you know, whether we want to do the feasibility or not, so that will be coming to council fairly soon. It was interesting that I was in a meeting at the airport, International Airport, yesterday with the three vice presidents of market development, commercialization, and all that, because they have some interest in working with us regarding fuel development, biojet fuel development, and initial interest. But their market development, funny thing, two of the vice presidents were born in Drake Valley and raised in Drake Valley. So they were talking about they're going to put an outlet mall there at the airport. She said, maybe we could have a plane going there and picking up people, and they can shop and go back to Drake Valley, so that was the interesting idea. But we have the Drake Valley Airport to their attention that if they need anything, and they said, you never know, when sometimes something comes up that we could be for freight or anything else, but at the same time, doing that study, we can, I'll bring the proposal to council before we proceed with that, see if that meets council's approval.
Any questions of Mr. Deal? No? Thank you. Councilor Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last council meeting, we've had a lot of holidays and not a lot of activities, but of note, we had our campaign school on December eighteenth and twenty-second. but of note, we had our campaign school on December eighteenth and twenty-second. First time that this council has attempted such an endeavor, and I have to say, I think that the council school went off very well. I'm hoping that the candidates that did come or those that were interested found it very beneficial, and I thought it went over very well. So kudos to councillor Nodowa and councillor Wheeler for spearheading that initiative. On December nineteenth, we had a workshop with Gord McIntosh to look over our economic development and tourism plans, to set priorities, to give some clarity to some action ideas. It was a very good workshop that day, and I'm looking forward to some of the action items that will come out of that workshop. And the only other activity I have to report is that on December thirtieth, I attended the funeral of Terry Kilborn, who was a well-known, well-respected, well-loved community member. And I have to say that Terry will be very missed from his work on F C S S and with humans helping humans and all the other work that he did behind the scenes within our communities, and my condolences go out to his wife, Grace, of fifty-one years, and his four children who will miss their dad without, which goes without saying. And other than that, I had a good, restful holiday, and I'm looking forward to the spring and summer session on council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bossert. Ten point two, councillor Nardle?
Thank you, Mayor. As councillor Bossert had said, it was a quiet two weeks, which was nice. It's nice to be in the land of grownups again. I love my children, but two weeks full-time. So other than the campaign schools, I am very pleased that we were able to do that. It does get a little bit more challenging when you have existing councillors competing against new councillors and so on, so it was really a nice change to be the coach at this time. And since I'm not running at the next election, I volunteer to be coach again, to take the pressure off the existing councillors to go forward, but I really enjoyed it, and I hope the attendants enjoyed it as well. It's something that we really wanted to give a true perspective of what it's like to be a councillor, the roles, responsibilities, everything that goes into it, so people are going into it with their eyes wide open and with clear expectations of the roles and responsibilities. So I thank everyone who attended. I think we had seven total, something like that, which is great. We don't expect thirty people for a municipal election, so I thought seven was excellent. Also attended the economic, the joint economic meeting with the county. It was great that we have our new economic development officer was able to attend that, and I have high hopes for her. I think she's going to be an excellent addition to the team, so really looking forward to some of the initiatives she can bring forward. And other than that, at the end of this month, I will be missing council as councillor Wheeler and I are attending Winter City Shake-Up Conference, so we will not be present there, but I'm very excited. I just brought up some of the program things to just discuss in terms of thriving in northern cities, designing infrastructure for winter environments, embracing winter, which is a challenge for everybody, especially this week, in terms of marketing and how to establish newcomers who really, when we think of our foreign workers and coming into a new community, and that's one of the sessions as well. So I'm really looking forward to this in terms of the place-making and what's possible for our community and looking at it in different perspectives. So I look forward to the conference and bringing back the report and sharing time with councillor Wheeler there, and that's my report.
Thank you very much. Councillor Long?
Since the last council meeting, also, obviously fairly quick. I think the first meeting on the eleventh, I think, of December. I think we're the most exciting bodies that we have in our community. But that is going to be interesting, I think, moving in a long and straight direction in the next twelve months or so, so that's something to look forward to. I myself and Mister Deal went to, to, ostensibly for the K L M's or the management of K L M's, to Schiphol, Amsterdam, to strengthen the relationship that we currently are building with the Dutch Trade Commission, et cetera. So that was worthwhile and interesting. They also, committee meeting, which I'd like councillor Wheeler to talk about, I think, was interesting, the events that we do have here today, and I hope we haven't put you off. And, yeah. Joint session with the county and the, that we have worked together there, very happy to see us doing that, so we'll leave it there.
Thank you, councillor Long. Councillor Wheeler?
Thank you. I think most of the topics that I have been at or attended have been mentioned, aside from the Agriplex that we're still moving forward with. I did have a physician come and tour the community over the holidays, so they seemed positive, interested. They've been living in Edmonton for a year, so they're kind of, it wasn't too much, worried when they were out on December thirty. But hopefully, we'll hear from them, assuming within the next month or two, if they decide to move here or not. We continually have, we're on tours at least two, hopefully four, it just depends, and show them the community and the town and what it's kind of really like, and, yeah, we hope they sign up. But other than that, I think the thing that, things coming up, that there is a ski weekend after, I know they're still looking for volunteers, if anyone interested, it's going to be super fun, lots of riders, kids that race in there, they're pretty cute to see on their little sticks swinging around. But, and then there is also a winter festival on the January twenty-fourth, from one till three, that they're putting on through Aim for Success, I believe that one is, and they're going to be doing the Maple in the Snow, which I'm super excited about because of so. And then there's Women in Business, a workshop coming up on January twenty-second, so there's lots of stuff going on.
Indeed there is. Thank you very much. On the twelfth of December, I was taking, to Sam Ishday from the White Bull, and he received a trophy. I think he placed number six, which was impressive. That Sam Ishday had a, and Lola from F C S S with F C S S founding, that was an activity which both the, and I participated to advance the cause of F C S S founding. In light of the upcoming budget cuts from the province, we want to try to preserve those programs that most need preserving. On the thirteenth, I just want to say this, with the town Christmas party, thank you to councillor Wheeler for emceeing the event, and I think it was a very nice evening, and I hope the town staff felt the same way. The eleventh, had a meeting with the CEO and our solicitors regarding planning for the upcoming council retreat in February, and they were, by the Aurora School Choir, who typically comes through the town office just prior to Christmas and sings a few carols for us, and it was really nice. On the nineteenth, of course, has been referred to, the Economic Development and Tourism Workshop, together with Breton Village Council and Brazzo County Council. It was interesting to note that each and every councillor from the town, and Brazzo County, who were in attendance, endorsed the concept of those workshops and specifically identified a number of projects that we can and should be working on together, each and every one of them. So that was heartening, and I look forward to the results of that going forward into the remainder of the year. Although, I was able to attend the campaign school on the eighteenth, but on the twenty-second, it's been alluded to, we had a very good turnout, I think, and good luck to both of you in the upcoming by-election. On the thirtieth, I was delighted to meet with councillor Wheeler, the prospective new physician, Dr. Stephen O'Callaghan, because Stephen is his name. I can't pronounce his last name, but we had a great talk about what our community has to offer, and his approach to community medicine was really encouraging, and I very much hope that he and his family see their way clear to choosing Drayton Valley. And I, as I've mentioned in the past, I'm available to the physician recruitment committee anytime to meet with any prospective physicians. So with that, that's my report. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councillor Wheeler? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We're adjourned.